I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for its Wednesday, December 11, 2013 meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Anton?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I have you all standing, please. Anybody who's going to give any testimony this evening, either for or against any agenda, you've got to be sworn in. So if you please raise your hand, I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I noticed a couple of hands, so. All right. I would ask that you silence any and all electronic devices, if you would, please. Chairman gets mighty upset when that happens. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our October 9, 2013, and November 13, 2013 meetings. Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Do we have a question on the motion?
I was not here for the October 9 meeting, so if you take them both together, does it...
All right, I'll tell you what. Amend the motion to, we'll just vote on October 9. Second. Motion by the chairman, seconded by Commissioner Anton. On the motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in...
Agreement.
Approval, so, okay, we have amended it. We are voting for October 9 only.
Roll call?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Anton?
Stand.
Commissioner Van Buren passes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Fleet?
Stand.
Okay. And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the minutes for our October 9 meeting are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, our November 13, 2013 meeting. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren passes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the minutes as presented are approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. Reading of the findings of fact of planning and zoning item 13030. May we have a reading, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The existing rear patio is in need of improvements and a partial replacement. The applicant also wishes to slightly expand the existing patio as the remainder of the rear yard contains a slope and is not suitable for outdoor living. With the proposed patio, lot coverage measures 40 percent. The lot coverage requirement was 40 percent when the house was originally constructed, but was reduced by the village in 2011 to 35 percent. The applicant cannot yield a reasonable return on his investment in this property and yield a reasonable return on his outdoor living space without the variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The subdivision in which the property is located contains adequate stormwater detention to handle the 40 percent lot coverage for the property. The proposed improvements comply with the 40 percent lot coverage which existed when the existing home was originally constructed. The property's lot coverage with the existing patio is 38.6 percent and is considered a legal, non-conforming lot coverage. The proposed increase in lot coverage is approximately 1.4 percent. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. An increase to the existing lot coverage by 1.4 percent in order to provide an improved and slightly expanded paver patio will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The patio will comply with all setbacks and adequate stormwater detention exists for this property if developed to 40 percent lot coverage.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for planning and zoning item 13030 are hereby adopted and approved. Under new business, planning and zoning item 13032, Ryan Kerr of Crimson Security Tenant with Chester Godwell, property owner, regarding the property located at 15 South Cass for the following. A special use permit request to operate a ground floor office in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening, sir.
Evening. Quickly, I'll tell you about myself. I'm a homeowner in Westmont. I served over seven years as a military police officer, and I also worked as a private investigator. About my business, criminal security investigation, it's Illinois LiveScan fingerprint vendor and background checks. What it is, it's LiveScan is directly linked to Illinois State Police and the FBI, and it's a inkless. And what it is, it determines individual suitability for employment licensing placement of trust. Some examples are like schoolteachers, healthcare, village and city employees. Anybody who has anything with Illinois State license can ask a fingerprint. I'd also provide non-fingerprint background checks for companies for pre-employment. This will be, the proposed address is 15 South Cass. It's a small, it's a 16 by 12 space. It can't be used as anything else other than what a privacy was, was an office. It'll be man, nine to five, weekend appointments only.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? We close the public comment, staff?
The applicant is requesting a special use because it's an office in the ground floor in the downtown. Typically, the village board would like to see retail and restaurants. In this case, though, it's a very small, under 300 square foot space, and it has been typically used as an office before.
Isn't this the office that that road builder occupied for a little time?
Yeah, they used it for about maybe six to eight months.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you will.
So if I want to check background check on someone I'm about to hire, I go to you?
That's correct.
And you have access to FBI and state police or whatever?
That's correct.
Through some arrangement?
It's actually through the state of Illinois. I'm a, would actually be, I'm a vendor, fingerprint vendor, so it actually go all right through them. So I actually send the stuff directly to the Illinois State Police.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
May you need to expand into next office too, maybe?
Maybe.
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, I don't really see any issues with this. There's really not much use for space that's that small commercially for any type of resale effort or anything like that, so I support that, and you have my vote.
Commissioner Anton?
Good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Do you do tenant background checks too, or is it mainly...
That is something I'm actually looking into. Once I get all this other stuff down, I'll be doing, actually even looking into background checks for credit and tenant checks also. And I also provide notary service.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Being that this particular location had been used primarily as an office space in the past, I don't think it was ever used for retail as long as I've lived here, so I don't have any issues with it.
Commissioner Fleet?
Go.
No questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
The only thing I have is I hope you have to expand soon. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, since we have a request for a special use, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed use is an office use which will be completely enclosed and will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will be an indoor use which will not create adverse noise, light, vibration, odor, hours of operation, or have any other adverse impacts on surrounding property. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space and the surrounding properties are fully developed. This use will not adversely impact the normal and orderly development of adjacent properties. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space which is adequately served by existing utilities, drainage, and accessways. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The proposed use will not create any unique parking or traffic concerns sufficient off-street and on-street parking exists for this low-impact use. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed use meets the other regulations of the zoning ordinance and Westmont Code of Ordinances, and no variances are required in conjunction with this use.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. Findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 13032. A, item A, special use permit request to operate a ground floor office in the B1 Limited Business District. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, good luck to you, sir. Planning on new item, planning and zoning item 13033, Steven Matthews of the Rail Barber Shop Tenant with Matthew Adicula, property owner, regarding the property located at 20 West Burlington Avenue for the following. A, special use permit request to operate a ground floor barber shop in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening, sir.
How are you doing today? So basically about myself, I went to school for marketing, realized that I was an entrepreneur, started a personal training business, and I wanted to do a shop run, but there's really no way for me to compete with like, you know, these bigger gyms, like corporate gyms, charter, those places like that, so I fell into barbering. I thought it was a low overhead business. I operated a successful business in Downers Grove for a year and a half now. Five stars on Yelp, subject to the public. I have pictures, if you guys want to take a look at them, of, you know, before and after what we've done with the place, inside of the place. I also have the reviews, if you guys like to see, you know, my previous work in Benchmark, what I will do here.
Why don't you put some on, a couple of pictures on the screen there?
Put them on here.
So the home audience can also see it then?
Okay. I don't really know how to work this, so.
Just lay them down on the...
Just lay it down there.
So I have pictures of before. Oh, that's cool, I like that. Very nice. So this is before. Okay, so it's pretty outdated. You guys can see. Multicolored walls and all that stuff. Had to fill the walls and some of the flooring. And inside of it now, it's about a, I'd say it's about 80 percent done. So as you can tell, it's like totally different. Walls, lights. And this is our logo. Thought you guys would have liked to approve of that. It's like 1930s, 40s poster art. And that's, that's like what we want to do. We want to do like a traditional men's barber shop. Professional barber. I'm also a professional fighter, MMA, so I bring that same work ethic to this business, you know what I mean? I even have it on my phone, like I have it 24/7, you know? The same logo on my phone, I just want to get this place open, basically. Run a legitimate business. That's all.
I understand this was also used as a barber shop previously?
Previously, yes.
Okay, is there anybody who will speak on this issue from the public? Please, sir, if you would, give us your name and sign in.
Father Matthew, I owned the property, and I bought it like 35 years ago from a barber. He had it since it's been built, like 55 years ago. It built as a barber, used like a barber. Still, the old barber, after 30, 35 years, couldn't stand up anymore, and he retired. So that's why he came in. I thought he was a, he's a good guy, and, you know, we just give it to him. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. If you would sign in, please. Is there anybody else from the public who will speak on this? Seeing no hands raised, we'll close the public comment, staff?
Barber shops also require a special use in the downtown, and unfortunately, special uses do not run with the property, so any new barber would need to request their own special use. And Mr. Matthews is very eager to get going. The previous barber was in there for several decades.
Thank you. All right, let's start with Commissioner Fleet, if you will.
Mr. Matthews, what sort of signage would you put up?
Same, same type of thing, just all I would want to do is, luckily, the electrical stuff still works there, so all I want to do is put a new barber pole up. That's it. And then do like that, do that logo on the front. It's, I think it falls in your guys' criteria. It's like, you know, it's still vintage, but it's, it has like a modern twist to it. I think it really fits for the town.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, being that it's more of a modern barber shop that you're going for, are you guys going to be selling men's products or just strictly offering service?
Not right away. No, I don't like to carry a lot of overhead, like I said, especially, you know, starting a new place. You were a year and a half at the Downers Grove Barber Shop, so I like to just do everything serviced, and then, you know, maybe down the road we'll do something like that, but for right now.
Okay, well, there is a potential for sales of products, but that's not your main intent.
Possibly, but not in the near future.
Yeah, I like the look of the new, you know, shop.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Do I understand that you're going to keep the one in Downers?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, you know what? I grew up on the south side of Chicago, and we had a bakery there, it was from Bridgeport, and you know, it got, a lot of times it got robbed, so I'm glad to come out to the suburbs and bring business in a safer area. You know, I would love to work in my neighborhood. I have a good reputation there and stuff like where I grew up, but it's just not safe. I'm glad to be out here and put, put business out here. So I would like, ideally like to get all the suburbs if I could, and then maybe downtown, down the road, but...
Okay, now, this is, this is going to start out as a one-chair operation?
It's going to start out as a one-chair, yes. And then as we get busy, if we get too busy, you know, I can handle 35 haircuts a day. That's a lot of heads, you know, so if we get too busy and I can't handle it, then I'll bring someone on, and then I'll do the parking variance.
Okay, now, the parking requirements are met when you're a one-chair shop. With two, is he okay?
With two, he would need to request a variance.
Okay. Well, I hope he'd need two.
Hope I need three.
Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Anton?
I hope Mullins come back. I miss Mullins.
I hope not, you know, because that's less we got to cut, and then, you know, we start getting these long hairstyles, and I got to change up my program.
Good luck, I'll probably come in and see how you're doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
So the renovation we saw is the Downers facility?
No.
That's this current facility now?
I don't have the Downers facility. I thought, you know, I did the reviews and stuff like that. You guys want me to put them on here? Like what people are saying about Downers Grove. I didn't want to get into Downers Grove too much because we are here, but I mean, I can put those reviews.
Okay, just so that I understand, you're opening up here in Westmont?
Yes.
The renovation we saw is the Westmont facility already?
Yes.
Okay.
Inside.
You're keeping a presence in Downers Grove or no longer?
I'm keeping a shop in Downers as well.
And a shop in Downers, okay. Good, I like the look, I like the idea.
I've been blessed with good help, so it's been easy for me to make this expansion.
Got it. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
This building here just screams barber shop, just from the outside, and then when you get inside, you even have a different look than what you would expect from seeing this architecture and that. And having just one chair and having barber shop discussions, and you being a professional fighter keeps the arguments to a minimum.
No, I'm not. I'll be the last guy in this entire room to fight somebody, I promise you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hope you need four chairs.
The only question I have is your pictures?
Yes.
Since you presented them, and may we have them and make copies of them and get them back to you?
Absolutely.
If you would give them to our lady Jill?
You guys want the reviews too? I mean, I printed them out, I'm not going to...
Give them to her.
Give everything to Jill, and she'll make copies.
Okay, cool.
And then she'll get, you'll get your originals back. And the only thing I've got to say is thank you and good luck.
Oh, thanks, guys.
I wish you the best. Okay, since we have a request for a special use, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed use is a small-scale barber shop use which will be completely enclosed and will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will be an indoor use which will not create adverse noise, light, vibration, odors, hours of operation, or have other adverse impacts on the surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space and the surrounding properties are fully developed. This use will not adversely impact the normal and orderly development of adjacent properties. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space which is adequately served by existing utilities, drainage, and accessways. The criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The proposed use will not create any unique parking or traffic concerns. Sufficient off-street and on-street parking exists for this low-impact use. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed use meets the other regulations of the zoning ordinance and Westmont Code of Ordinances, and no variances are required in conjunction with this use.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact are hereby adopted for a special use. Under planning and zoning item 13033, item A, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a special use permit request to operate a ground floor barber shop in the B1 Limited Business District. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, and was that you, Steve?
Yes.
And seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Phil?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, good luck to you on your request. Next item, planning and zoning item 13034, David Fix of Endurant Sports Tenant with Greg Rosowski, property owner, regarding the property located at 37 West Quincy for the following. A, special use permit request to operate bicycling, to operate bicycling classes on the ground floor of a bicycle sale shop in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello. Hi, my name is David Fix. I'm the owner of Endurant Sports, which is a specialty niche bicycle retailer. The special use is because we, in the winter, in our offseason, we do offer cycling classes indoors, in which customers come in with their own bike, which we have at the store, set up on an indoor trainer, and we offer classes in the offseason to offset revenue that we don't typically get in weather like this.
All right. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Seeing nobody, we're going to close the public comment, staff?
The applicants are very eager to move next door and open up their retail store, and then offer indoor cycling classes to their customers during the winter months. I know they've also spoken with their neighbor, neighboring tenant about noise concerns, and I thought that might be something to raise to the commission for discussion, just the potential for loud music or vibrations.
Sure. You want me to address that?
Sure.
Okay. Well, the classes are vocally instructed, so the music isn't above an instructor's voice, and the hum of the trainers is very minimal. It's what it is, it's a hum. It's a smooth tire against a smoother resistance wheel. And the classes are done early in the morning and on Saturday mornings, so our traffic is early, and the other tenant won't be there, and so I don't think it would be a noise or a parking issue if that is a concern as well.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
So the classes are only in the winter? In the summer, you don't hold the classes?
Well, there's a possibility that we'll be holding some classes, but what happens is we go from classes of 12 to classes of twos, threes, and fours, and so they go down quite a bit, but...
Because everybody else is riding their bike?
People are outside. That's typically how it goes.
You're going to be, is it going to be a bike shop other than the exercise? You'll be selling bikes, or...
Correct.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Pill?
What, how do they pay for these classes? Is it an individual, or do they buy in bulk?
There's an option to do both.
What does a class typically run?
If you pay per class, you get what we call a punch card of 12 classes, and that runs about $200.
And then, did I read correctly that these are some pretty high-end bikes that you'll be selling? This isn't your typical, like the old Schwinn or anything?
That's correct. We found that, this is our third store, and we've been in business for eight years, and we found that our niche is really focusing on what most people are afraid of, and that's higher inventory, and we don't want to compete with the big box Walmarts and Targets, Kmart, et cetera.
What's the average price on one of the bikes that you'll be selling? That's a fairly decent investment for a bicycle. Excellent.
We know what we're doing.
Commissioner Anton?
Thank you. I wish you luck.
Thank you.
My little Gary Fisher is a kind of pile of junk, I guess. Great, I'm glad to see these people moving in, glad to see stores opening up. This is, this is great. I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
You said that you have stores in operation now?
Correct.
And you're going to keep those?
One of the stores, in, we have a store nearby in Willowbrook, and we'll, in conjunction, we're moving that operation here.
And so you already have an established clientele?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I think it's a great concept, especially in that location. I mean, it kind of fits there.
Yeah, that's what we feel.
And it's a specialty-type business, and I know what you're doing because my son has bought a couple of those type of bikes. I was shocked when he told me the price. But he lives out in the Vale area, so he gets a lot of riding done. Anyways, I wish you luck, and are you going to be doing repairs as well?
We are.
Okay.
Yes. And we repair any bike.
Yeah, okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fleet?
Sir, would you tell us about signage and any lighting, external lighting that you'll have?
Sure. Our business is, is unique in that, and one of the reasons we like this location is that, in terms of signage, we probably won't do anything more than the awning on there with our name on it. No, no extra lighting or anything like that. Because of our business is, is unique in that we're mostly destination-oriented. We want people to know we're there, but we don't want to advertise too much because we find that if a lot of people are coming in with the idea of, oh, cool, here's a bike shop, but when they walk in, they're like, well, this isn't really the type of bike shop I thought this was going to be. So educating our customer base and where we are is, is more important than letting the general public know where we are.
Good luck.
Subtle, but prominent, yeah.
And I also, sir, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, since we have a request for a special use, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Request for the special use, criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed use is a small-scale bicycle class use in conjunction with a bicycle retail store which will be completely enclosed and will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will be an indoor use which will not create adverse noise, light, vibration, odors, hours of operation, or have any other adverse impacts on the surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space and the surrounding properties are fully developed. This use will not adversely impact the normal and orderly development of adjacent properties. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space which is adequately served by existing utilities, drainage, and accessways. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The proposed use will not create any unique parking or traffic concerns. Sufficient off-street and on-street parking exists for this low-impact use. Criteria number six, that the special use shall, in all of their respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed use meets the other regulations of the zoning ordinance and the Westmont Code of ordinances, and no variances are required in conjunction with this use. The proposed, criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition two. The proposed class use will have one instructor and up to 12 students at any one time with limited hours of operation. Sufficient off-street parking exists to accommodate this use, and ample public parking likewise exists. The use is located adjacent to both rail and bus lines. As such, this use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety.
If you're in agreement with these findings of fact for special use, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. Therefore, they are adapted. I would, under planning and zoning item 13034, item A, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a special use permit request to operate bicycling classes on the ground floor of a bicycle shop in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Fleet, seconded by Commissioner Anton, was that?
Sure.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there a question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when you go before the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
See a $10,000 bicycle. Our next item of business planning and zoning, one threat, 13035, is by a fellow board member, and so that we do not keep all of the people in the audience here, then we will jump ahead and we will take planning and zoning item 13036. Leaders Bank, represented by James Oakland, regarding the properties located at 50 West Ogden Avenue, 635 Grant, 631 Grant, 629 Grant, 625 Grant, 621 Grant, 617 Grant, and 613 Grant, all in Westmont for the following. A, map amendment request to rezone the properties at 635 Grant, 631 Grant, 629 Grant, 625 Grant, 621 Grant, 617 Grant, and 613 Grant Street from R4 General Residence District to V2 General Business District. Item B, a preliminary plant of subdivision. Item C, site and landscaping plan approval for a parking lot expansion. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, sir.
That's quite all right, Chairman. My name is Jim Olgin. I'm from the law firm of Goldstein, Skrotzky, Rush, and Nemec and Hoff. Our offices are located at 835 McClintock Drive in the Village of Bridge. And tonight I'm here on behalf of the Leaders Bank, which is the owner of the property in question. Also here with me this evening are William DeVolio, who just stepped out for a second. He's the executive vice president and general counsel for the Leaders Bank. Jeff Jacob from Jacob &amp; Hefner, he's the project engineer. And David McCallum from David McCallum Associates, the project landscape architect. So if there are any specific questions regarding any of the items of their expertise, they're, they're here to, to answer those, those questions for you. As was mentioned, we're here on our petition requesting rezoning of a portion of the property from R4 to the V2 General Business District. The property, I'm sure you're familiar with it, is the old Lincoln dealership, which is bounded on the south side by Ogden Avenue, and to the west by Grant Street, and to the north by 41st Street. Along 41st Street, there's actually three townhomes which were part of an original subdivision that came through, and that's part of the reason that the property immediately to the north of the, of the commercial building is zoned R4. And there's a... So these are the three existing townhomes that were part of the original subdivision, residential subdivision. The bank took owner, ownership of the undeveloped residential portion of the property back in 2011, and the bank, since that time, has been trying to market that property for residential use, including, you know, some, what we would consider some fairly good incentives to try to bring somebody in to, to develop that property as residential. Unfortunately, that, they, they just weren't able to, to find anybody that was willing to do that. Subsequent to the obtaining ownership of that residential portion, the bank also obtained ownership of the dealership parcel, which is right here, which is already developed with, with a building. And similarly, it attempted to market that piece, you know, separately as a commercial use. And the feedback that they, that the bank received as part of, you know, their marketing efforts is that there was really insufficient parking on that site in order to make it a viable commercial piece. The reason that it was viable before as a Lincoln dealership is there was a little, there was a commonality of ownership between the Lincoln dealer and the parcels to, to the west. So there would be an ability to have additional parking or overflow parking from the Lincoln dealership to the west. That ownership commonality no longer exists. So based on the lack of demand for, you know, for somebody to come in and develop the residential, the comments that we were getting for people who were looking at commercial, it became pretty evident that additional parking was going to be needed at this site. And that's what, you know, we're here tonight requesting. And what we're looking at doing is expanding the parking further north into what was, you know, formerly residential. And we, we had some preliminary discussions with staff to make sure that what we were going to propose was really going to fit in with the area and the community at this location. And we think we've done that in this particular, in, in our site plan. As you can see, what we've done is we've included a detention facility which is going to be located on the, on the north side of, of the property. And obviously, that does the functional aspect of retaining water as required by the village, but it also provides some buffering to the property owners to the north, to the existing townhomes. We're also providing a, a significant amount of landscaping on, on all the perimeter areas of, of the parcel, and are going to be providing a privacy fence along the east property line to buffer any of the adjacent property owners in that direction. We've also elected that to not request any access points off of Grant Street onto this additional parking area. And the main reason for that is to really prevent any kind of traffic headaches for any residential folks in the area. So our access point, or the access point of any customers that might be coming in, is going to be off of Ogden. Once again, the reason for that is because we really wanted to minimize the impact in the area. We're also just proposing using the existing lighting in the area, meaning the streetlights that were, you know, approved and requested as part of the original residential subdivision. So we're not adding, at this point in time, any additional lighting onto the, the parking area that would, in, you know, in any way, impact the area property owners. So in order to make this site function for, as a commercial property, we believe that this additional parking is necessary. We also believe that the, the extension north of the parking is pretty consistent with other parking along that Ogden corridor. So because of all that, we believe that this fits in with the area. We believe it makes the site, you know, work and, and function for its uses, and we think it's really the, the most minimal impact to the site. So, you know, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you might have or the residents might have.
All right, very good, sir. Will anybody from the public speak on this issue? If you would, please, sir, sign in and announce your name.
Good evening. My name is Joe Fitzner, and I live at 4104 North Grant Street. I'm directly across the street from the property that's under discussion. And alls I can say is imagine sitting on your couch in your living room, looking out your bay window, and what I would see is a parking lot. After living in my home for 28 years, it's not something I would look forward to. Eight years ago, myself and some others in this room stood right here talking about the same issues about the same property. We talked about how far should business be allowed to put their footprint into the community? A decision was made at that time. No one was completely satisfied, but it was something we could all live with. But now they want to change the footprint and extend farther into the neighborhood. I believe that what was agreed upon eight years ago, or right eight years ago, should still be right today. I know they've presented some nice landscape drawings. When I was here eight years ago, they also presented a lot of nice landscape drawings. That was part of the reason I was not too adverse to it eight years ago. But if you go to that property today, it doesn't look like any of the drawings back then. For example, the lot next to my home, which is not unquestioned, was supposed to have nice landscaping and a privacy fence. And as you can see, when he put up the picture, the overhead, the satellite view, that lot that's directly south of my home, it's, it's a lot with rocks and weeds and a fence that can barely stand on its own. I urge the commission to deny these changes in the code and have the property developed as it was intended to eight years ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Excuse me, sir. If I might ask, are you the first, you're on the west side of Grant, immediately north of the, of the car dealership? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Please, if you would, sign in and announce your name.
My name's Kevin Antinski. I live at 4100 North Grant Street, which is at the very end of the block to the property in question. Like my neighbor Joe said before, these architects' plans are great. We've seen them all before, but they always change. I mean, like you said, not to reiterate everything he said eight years ago, you guys were giving plans, and they look great. They were approved, and it doesn't look anything like that. I worked a long time in construction. Trust me, architects will take and draw plans up, and the guy out there building it, it doesn't work. You know, some of the things I, they said, right now, they're not requesting access to Grant Street. Today, I took a little walk when I was, when I was walking my dog and just took some pictures. You know, one of the things that they say that they're not gonna bring, all track, all business is gonna come off Ogden Avenue? Well, if, sorry, I gotta find these here. Sorry, I just did them in black and white, and I don't know if you can see them too well. But this is the fence that was put up to the, and to the adjacent property. And right there, there's a porch shop, a little divider in the parking lot. There's no way a semi is gonna get in and out of there to take and unload cars. So what's, I mean, that's one side of the building? This is the same, this is the picture coming from Ogden Avenue looking north. As you can see right here, here's the little porch shop, and this is gonna be one of their main accesses to get in there. As far as the other side of the building, which, it's a little, it's a small little drive here. There's no way they're gonna get trucks in there like they supposedly said, not gonna take and encroach on, on our property on Grant Street. You know, I, I just foresee it being a big issue with, as far as the next thing you know, we're gonna have semis unloading cars up and down our street. It's great this plan's here, but who's to say, oh, the plan changes and we have some kind of access to Grant Street now? So what's that mean? Everybody's gonna take their car out, go for a test drive? What's everybody do? What's it got under the hood? Next thing you know, they're cruising up and down the street, seeing what's there. I mean, I don't, I just recently got married. My wife and I plan on having kids, but I can't even let a kid out in the front yard if, you know, who's to say this, this great plan today, but in six months from now, it's something different? You know, they have these site plans that say, you know, we're gonna make it look nice with landscaping. Sorry, I got these all kind of out of order here. It's a, that's the beautiful landscaping that we see now. We saw the fancy pictures before with color. Thumbleweed's just posting the grounds. Here, here's the, here's the lot next to Joe Fitzner's house. There's a pile of dirt there. There's nothing there. Nothing was ever done. And then you take and you ask, what else do they do behind these properties? I mean, I don't know how many times, when the last time you guys went and behind one of the car dealerships was? This is a, this is a picture, this is a picture from the distance. It's a pile of dirt that's been sitting there for eight years. You know, what's this right here? Oh, we don't have any more storage, so let's put a ConnX box out there, and then let's throw tires on the outside of it. But yet, we're gonna take and make it look nice for the community. I, I mean, I know this isn't, this isn't the property in question, but this is what goes on behind these places. You know, it became a big issue with, oh, it's a car dealership. Why are there moving trucks in there? I've seen buses. I've seen all kinds of things in those parking lots because dealers will put, will purchase anything, and, oh, just put it out back. But yet, we walk out our front door, and that's what we have to look at. You know, then they say, oh, it's not gonna be an issue with employees parking. This is today. That dealership's vacant, but there's, the employees are still parking in that cul-de-sac when there's a, when there's a parking lot right there. You know?
For everybody's benefit, when I was there today, that car is on the parkway, on the grass strip, Shannon.
Yeah, it was in the street.
I saw it today.
He's off the curb, and he's on the grass strip.
No, he wasn't.
Between the two, yeah? Because I, I drove right by him, and I, I saw where he was.
I walked my, I walked my dog down the sidewalk today.
No, I'm saying, he's completely illegally parked.
Well, and that's been a common thing that we've been seeing. You know?
Shannon, are you taking notes on this?
I am, yes.
Thank you.
I, I talked about, the plans look great. What's it gonna be in six months from now? And they finally come to the village and say, this is what we're gonna officially do? You know, they talk, there's, there's a lot of vacant dealerships in town. I mean, it, it became one of those things. I mean, I know eight years ago, there was one individual that was behind all these stuffs, but, and now it, it's a big problem. The Chevy dealer's gone, the Lincoln Mercury dealer's gone, the Lamborghini dealer's gone. I, I mean, is it, is it now the village gonna take and say, we're gonna take in, sorry, here's your house, but we're gonna do anything to get somebody in here and make us happy? You know? You know, the big thing, they're going to put a parking lot in here. Well, they put down asphalt. Water doesn't go through asphalt. Where's it go? It runs downhill. You know, our, my neighbor behind me, this last spring, there was water up to her driveway. So that's fine and dandy that they're going to take and cover this up, and, oh, we have this little green space. There's a retention area there, too. But I'll tell you what, they ain't going to control every last bit of water that falls out of the sky and keep it to go into that retention pond. It's going to run off somewhere else. You know, it's one of those things, it's like out of sight, out of mind. Nobody sees it because it's, you know, they're not driving down 41st Street. They're not driving down Grant Street, they're driving on Ogden. Oh, it's back there, it doesn't matter, you know? We as residents, I mean, I know that there's, there's been a big thing, a big push to get rid of paper districts in the, within, throughout the state of Illinois. Yes, we are incorporated, yes. Have I thought about take, I mean, I'm sitting there, my wife and I are making plans to, hey, let's stay here, let's take an annex in, let's put an addition on the house. Why would I want to put an addition on the house if the village is going to turn around and say, well, no, we're going to put a parking lot here for you, and we don't care what it does. What it does to the value of your home, we don't care what kind of increased traffic, what kind of safety hazards there might be with this parking lot here, which has this pretty picture here right now, but in reality, what's it going to be? You know, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the gentleman's name before, but he says that they've been trying to market, selling that property. I've never once seen anything that says, "Property for sale." I don't know. I mean, you know, they take and they say that, they say that they tried marketing it, but there's never been a sign, hey, lot for sale, anything of the sort. And you know, and then I heard something that has the effects of townhomes don't sell. Well, you know, there's a lot of places around here that have townhomes. Maybe when they built the addition, or initial ones, they, they kind of built the Taj Mahal and were wanting beaucoup bucks for it instead of being something reasonable and something, you know, something practical for people. So, so I have, Nick, you do want?
Maybe we have those pictures?
Sure.
Can she name this? So can she use something?
Yes, ma'am. Miss, did I swear you in? Did you?
No, you didn't.
No problem.
I just didn't work.
Okay. I swear any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Little scouts on.
My name is Sherri Marks, and I live at 4103 North Adams, and I am next door to Kevin on the other corner. So if you were to put me up in the other side, I'm on his, right next to Kevin. Like they said eight years ago when we were here, and Mr. Wonderful was taking our blocks over and putting his three buildings up, and he took Grant Street over. His whole idea was to use that cul-de-sac supposedly to unload and load his trucks. Well, you know, that sounded wonderful, because that was the reason why he wanted that whole block. Well, that never, ever was, you know, he never used that for one truck to be unloaded. Every truck started coming down Adams Street. And even though, you know, while they never had a sign, I think somebody knocked the sign down, and, you know, the no-truck sign was removed and never put up. Then when they finally did put one up, it's very small, and they always load them, for some reason, facing north, and then the truck drivers come down. I don't know if you guys are going to have another meeting, because I'd be more than happy to show you all the pictures that I have of all the trucks that have been, you know, tipped and stuck in my yard. I had a gentleman once for eight hours in my yard waiting for the Illinois State Towweight Truck people to get them out, because he was a doozy. His, the thing that separates the tractor from the truck itself, that pole was embedded into the street, so they needed the real guys, you know, the ones who are on TV, the Illinois Truck people. But I know I'm going off, but I'm just saying, this is what's going to happen on their street, because they will be having semis up and down.
Okay, this is for your benefit, though. We are only a recommending board. This will go before the committee of the whole for the Board of Trustees, and I hope you attend that and bring your pictures at that time. And staff can tell you when that will be.
Okay. So, and when the townhome, well, so anyway, what I'm saying is, what they say and what they do are two totally different things. You know, it looks great, like Kevin was saying, you know, oh, we're going to put that cul-de-sac there, and that's the reason why. All that turned into was a parking lot for the employees. And then, or what they would do is, they made a little area where they were allowing the employees to go in and out of, and then they would zip through and they would test drive the cars. One of the neighbor across the street's dog got hit by one of the guys test-driving the cars. So they use our area as a neighborhood, as, instead of getting onto Ogden, they barrel out and use our little area as, you know, a takeoff. And, you know, and our other neighbor would be standing there screaming up and down the street, you know, for these people to slow down, you know, knock it off. But that's where they, because there's not, there's not a stop sign on Adams and 41st when you're going east and west. So there's a big area that they can barrel down and get good speed, and that's where they like to go down, is 41st. So I really think that having more, you know, car access, putting a parking lot there, having, you know, I just don't see how 41st with the parking lot there is just going to have more access to employees, people going in and out of there. And it's not, Ogden is not going to be in excess, you know? People will not be going in and out of Ogden, they will start coming in, you know, to 41st more so. Kevin said, every time that you build, he was supposed to put a retention pond in. I don't know, when we had that flood, everybody knows, this was like two hours after they opened up the sewers, but this was going out to Ogden from my house. You couldn't even see my mailbox. I had water all the way up to the top, but it's since then receded, because it was all the way across the street. I had a pretty good one, it was all the way up to here at my house. But this is the kind of water I now get, because ever since they put the townhome in, the townhouse itself in the corner, the street has gone down. I've marked it, and the street took pictures, which I could bring also. You can see how our street's gone down every 15 feet, it seemed, or 10 or 15 feet, you could see a crack in the street. That was before they paved it. And this whole area's going down now, you know? And their sidewalk, even where they put the water in, they, I don't know if they did the water line right, but my neighbor over across the street, the ones whose dog got hit, their driveway has a hole in it that, because he's right along the water line, no matter what he puts in it, it keeps, it's like a black hole, or a hole that just won't get filled, because there's something, I don't know what they did, but I swear, this whole area's going down now. And I have a crack that used to be like this in my driveway, that is now like this, you know? And so we're kind of caving down. Kevin and I have a ditch that we never had in our, between our houses. So more stuff that they're building over there is making us go down. The water was, you couldn't even, only see the nipple on my, this fire hydrant, because my neighbors have city water, but that's how much water was in my yard that day of the flood. And every time it rains now, you know, I start to panic because of this kind of stuff. And you could see where the water was up to here in the house.
If I might ask you a question? You reference a water line put in. Are you sure it was water and not sewer or storm sewer?
Well, they had to put water in for the townhomes that they built. And when I, when a friend of mine, the girl that lives over at the, she's not really a friend, but the neighbor that's dog got hit with the parking lot, her and I got into those townhomes to check them out, because the door was open, and we wanted to be nosy. We couldn't believe they were asking $435,000 or something. We were like, what? And we went down in the basement, and there was water all in the basement. And we were like, wow, you know, we were shocked that, you know, how are they going to sell them and this and that? But they sold them, and, and I was just shocked that there was water sitting there in the basement. But that was before they were done, I guess.
Okay, if I may, Shannon, are you making a note of this ground settling at the?
But I'll show you, yeah. You could see the, their sidewalk is two inches down, you know, and it's only, that was like five years after it was built, it dropped in.
I can understand a little bit of settlement from fresh, but if someone's got a hole in the ground that they can't fill up, that means the soil's being washed away somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's not good.
Right. And the trucks, when they come, that's not good either with, they take out, you know, the curbs all the time. The kids can't even stand at the bus stop, because they'll take it far enough that they've already taken, the ruts are so deep, the kids on the opposite side of the street can't even stand there anymore.
So the trucks should come in here and make?
But anyway, this is, it just continues how bad it was. It knocked over, that water was so bad.
That's what it's all about.
I don't know if you could see, I lost all my fishies, too, but here's the, knocked over my, what do you call that thing, a bridge? And it was all the way up to my neighbor's car, up to his door here, but it was pretty These pictures, Kevin? I don't know what I was going to say about these, but you're right on all this. Oh, you know what, too? Can I talk to these people? Am I able to talk to this?
Sure, of course.
Do you guys hear at night? I go walking, and I do walk pretty late with my dog. It's like right here, I took pictures of this, too, because I am a Columbo. Every, it's like, at night, there would be some guys dropping something off at night at like 1:00 in the morning, and they didn't have a truck that was marked, and they would open this door, and they'd throw stuff in there so fast and so loud that I was shocked that they weren't waking the neighbors up in the summertime. And, you know, so I went there one night with my camera and tried to get a picture of the truck and the license plate and stuff. And I talked to the, copper was by there once, and I was like, what are they dropping off? You know, trying to catch them and stuff, as if they were doing something illegal. Because why are they doing it so fast, and why was it so loud? I mean, they were so loud that I couldn't believe you guys weren't waking up every night. No? But why at 1:00 in the morning every, you know, once a week? But anyway, yeah, they're loud all the, I mean, what people say and what they do are two different things. I guess that's all I have to say really is, you know? And the thing is, every truck that came down and got stuck in my yard, the driver would say to me, they told me to come this way. And I'd go down to the dealer, and I'd say, why did you tell these people to come this way when you know you shouldn't? Well, you didn't tell them to come, you know, go north. We didn't tell them. Now, why would a trucker who's scared as can be and doesn't know his, you know, his area, because they're all people that come from everywhere, just picking up a load, they're unfamiliar of the town, the area, they're listening to these guys, they're not going to lie to me? You know, they're just, and then I said to the car dealers, well, then why do you even have them facing north when you load the truck? You know, wouldn't you just face that way and have a porter take them out? So I mean, they just laughed at my face, and they didn't give a, they didn't care at all if, you know, it's not my land, it's Downers Grove's land, you know, or the, it's the, you know, it's the walkway that's getting smashed and messed up and all that. It's just the inconvenience of 41st Street with the traffic not going by, the policeman having to take the time to block the traffic and all that good stuff, you know, that this trucker then has to do, and the cop has to waste his time, you know, waiting for a tow truck to come. And it's just an inconvenience of everyone's, and I can't believe that it won't happen on Grant Street when this comes.
Maybe we have copy, those pictures for our records, and we'll make sure you get your copies back.
Oh, just take a moment.
If you give them to Jill, please. Thank you very much. Is there anybody, anybody else that?
I wasn't sworn in, I'm late.
Okay, hold on one second. The property owner, the gentleman with the bank, if you would, do you have a tenant that's occupying that space that's?
No, let me just make a few comments.
No. What the lady referred to?
Let me go back to the original picture. No, actually, the, I'm Bill Nivoli, Leaders Bank, and I'm probably here because Mr. Wonderful isn't here anymore. It was a long process. One owner who owns the dealership that we're talking about, also, that family owns the property to the west, which has another dealership building in the parking to the rear. That same family owned the Chevy dealership, which is, again, to the west across that street. This process of foreclosure took four years, fought, you know, fought every way, every inch of the way. We first took ownership of the seven lots and the two of the three townhomes. Since that ownership, and by the way, the retention, which in all my discussions with the village, the retention on those seven lots has not caused any flooding of anything. We maintain that property, it's basically cut grass. All the improvements that were required, other than the lights, which we intend to put in, we did not put in, and the village knew that, because there was nothing, they didn't want it in at that time, I believe. But they're going, but including examining everything, including raising a couple of manholes or sewer outlets, the sidewalk, everything either has been done or will be done in this last stage. I cannot address the usage or how the abuse took a prior owner. Everything on the west side of Grant Street and all the piles of dirt that have been shown are not our property.
No, I know that.
Our property, even in this picture, has been maintained, I believe, well. We then, this year, when actually I thought we had a transaction worked out where the current operator, or the former operator would maintain ownership, fell through. He decided, and in a very abrupt way, moved everything and his Lincoln dealership immediately west to the building that his family owns. And they, actually, as you can tell, they always parked most of the cars in the back of that building. We took over this building, it is in good shape. It's only about a seven or eight-year-old building. Darwin Realty has gone through it, they manage it. We have checked all of the equipment, HVAC, it is a, in good shape. Not anyone's problem, but my, that lack of access to the parking that was owned by the same owner prior to this is the issue tonight. This is designed, by the way, I understand that, quote, "Nothing has been done," but we're here requesting something that will require us to do what's on the drawing or what's presented, or we won't be able to complete it, and if someone else comes in and to try and change it, that would be up to the village. But the plan that we're proposing, if approved, that's what would be done. I don't think we could do anything else without violating that plan.
Correct. Correct. No, but my question to you was, since you took ownership of the building, control of the building.
Yes.
No one has any access to it for late-night delivery of any sort?
Nothing. And the fence, the fence, the fence that we put up, just so you know, with the permit, was to make sure that the cars to the west on their property, there was no goings-on or driving on our property.
Yeah.
And that fence was put for that purpose. The, this building is not occupied at the moment. Twenty-four-hour security and watch by Darwin Realty. It's alarmed. We have done some work to the outside where there's been some, but again, it's, it's a very good building. I can tell you without, without the ability to confirm, we have had, I can confirm that we have a multimillion-dollar offer for this. However, when that, and it was, I, it was only identified to me as a upscale used car dealership. That offer was made, and it's my understanding that after looking at both properties, that they are following through with an offer on the Chevy dealership. Obviously, these are both dealership buildings. The access of the trucks has always gone through this way. Again, if you do what we are asking, and what, if we do the work that would be required, including, I think we're buffering it in anyway.
Correct.
But there would be, we, prior to selling it to any user, would, would take whatever steps necessary so that people don't plow into from Grant Street. I, I can certainly see what they're talking about. And I, I can't speak to the behavior of the, that owner. We actually have had inquiries also, and I, we've actually brought that to the village. I don't think that parking would have ever worked. Export Fitness has contacted us for this site. But given the current status, we want to maintain it and see if, if this plan would work for the village. And then be able to, our first priority would be a car dealership. And then this, this parking in the back, basically, how can I describe it, would be passive. It wouldn't be customer. There's enough parking around this building for the, for the customer truck.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and Chairman, just to kind of reiterate a couple of those things. If you look at the, at our site plan, as far as, you know, semi-trucks unloading, we're, we're putting pretty significant landscaping all along Grant Street. And even where there's less landscaping here, where, you know, there's still grass, there's still a sidewalk. I, I think the problem that may exist, and I'm not necessarily familiar with how they're unloading for the adjacent dealer, is this vacant piece over here that has kind of a way of accessing, something that would not occur on our site. And as Bill mentioned, you know, any, any plans, any landscape plans, I'm sure are going to be part of any kind of approval ordinance. And if, if we don't construct it in accordance with those particular plans, we're not going to be allowed to, to proceed with any kind of occupancy of, of the property. So the residents can be assured that what is being requested here is what's going to be constructed. And if not, you know, the village can, can make sure that, that we go ahead and in fact do that. Also, the residents were concerned about the, you know, stormwater and detention. What we're proposing, you know, this evening does meet, you know, the village's requirements with some modifications, which we're willing to, you know, to adhere to. And so it's going to be, you know, what, you know, the village typically requires for a development of this site. So I think that when you also look at, even just looking at the adjacent property and how far north it goes, we're looking at something that's pretty similar to not only that adjacent piece, but also other pieces on the Ogden corridor as far as the depth of the commercial use.
Okay, thank you. Now, I believe we had one more gentleman. And I have to swear in. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I do.
If you would, please sign in and give your, announce your name.
Zahari Dasklov, actually, I'm one of the, the only owner until recently in the townhouse development. So I'm, we bought the property about six, seven years ago, in 2007. At that point, we were shown plans by Mark Ayazou at the time, who was the owner and the developer. And we were, you know, given the impression that we were buying into a residential development. We were buying into something that was evolving. Of course, seven more townhouses were supposed to be built. That never happened. You know, we were starting a family, moving in, having kids. So we were looking forward to, to, to being part of this new development. I understand, you know, we had a recession, times were tough, Mark got himself in financial trouble, Leaders' Bank took over. I'm actually familiar with Mr. Nivoli because we have had some business dealings around the arranging of the property. My question is, why? Why rezone it if it's already residential? And I'm not sure, how much time have you actually had to market this property? I mean, if you, if it took you a while to legally settle with Mark or with the original owner, I ask, why don't give it a chance? I mean, give it another year, give it another two years until maybe a builder, another builder comes in and maybe wants to build homes instead. Right now, this street is a, is a closed, dead-end street. It's being used by a lot of the residents for walks, for biking, you know, walking their kids. What I'm also curious is on these plans, where exactly are they, you know, according to the new plans? So if you were to use the property lines, can you show us how far in it goes? Let's say this, you know, the parking lot versus the, this landscaping?
How far in from?
Say how far from this, from my property, from our property lines? How, where, where, where does the parking lot approximately sit?
Here.
I mean, it would be good to know, you know, how, you know, how, how close is it actually to our property? Just to get an idea, because when you look at it like this on a picture, it's one thing. If you're there. Roughly.
It's, I think we have three hundred and eighty-five feet from.
Okay, so from, let's say, this property line?
Yeah, from that north property line.
Okay. I just want to give you for what portion of it, is it about one third, you know, one, is it, are these two-thirds of this, this, this piece of land that is being taken by the, about a third?
About a third.
Okay. But again, I, I don't even want to consider this because why rezone it and not give another builder a chance to come in and perhaps build homes? This was the original intended purpose and this was what we were promised at the time. I understand things change. And I can appreciate, you know, Leaders' Bank also wanting to, you know, basically sell, sell it because right now they're responsible for it. And to their credit, they have taken care of the property. They have been cutting the grass, put a fence, traffic has stopped or been reduced since they took over. So you, you don't see as many cars parking anymore. But that's, this is basically why I'm just questioning, why turn it into commercial? Why can't this building be, be used by something other than a dealer? Perhaps retail? A store can move in. They, they're not going to need this parking space. That's about it.
Chairman.
We, actually, in terms of how long we've tried to sell it, we took the seven lots into ownership in 2011. This is not the kind of property you sell by putting up a big ugly sign. Builders, every builder knows every piece of property that's for sale. In 2011, there weren't a whole lot of buildings. We have contacted and continue to contact all residential people. The farthest we got, particularly with the price, price point, was with J. Lawrence Homes, who even with us throwing in the property to what might have been even a joint venture deal, they couldn't hit a, they couldn't hit profit at a price point that, that made sense. Just so you know, it's not improper to say what the price was on the two that sold stamped tax, right?
Yeah, that's public.
Yeah. We, we sold the two remaining townhomes within the last sixty days. Both were subject to professional inspections, believe me, of, of the properties. There was no water issues in those two townhomes. Both buyers, as again, I did professional inspections, in, in both those properties, which I thought was a, a good situation, sold for under $300,000, $275, and the one on the end sold for $290. And that's kind of the price point that I think is probably a good, probably on the high side. We, we have a lot of builders of the ones who are still around, who we worked with. We work with Inside Realty. We work with Darwin Realty. We work customers and people who are still surviving, are still in the business. But this property has been worked by me for three years. And it, it, it just, there is no one who wants to take it and run with it as residential.
And Chairman, just to address another, you know, concern that, you know, one thing that has been brought up once again is, you know, traffic concerns and, and safety. And once again, I think this site plan, by not providing any access onto Grant Street, it really provides for that. If you did go with a residential development with seven townhomes, that would, you know, obviously, you know, a couple of cars for each one, that would increase the number of cars on the road, the number of trips, and, and.
I would also say, I thought, and obviously some people disagree, I thought that this, given the, the usage of the property at the moment, I thought particularly with the, the retention to the north, which meets all the requirements for runoff, including runoff and retention for the three townhomes, which we took permanent responsibility for on this piece of property. When the townhomes were converted to simply a three-unit townhome, which was done and filed and done, you know, all properly, appropriately, we agreed that the, that retention would not have to be maintained on those three lots and would be perpetual for whoever owns this, on this property. I then, and we thought that this retention pond, which is going to be maintained with the landscaping and is what, three hundred?
Eighty-five.
It's three hundred and eighty-five feet from where the cars would be to the townhomes. And likewise across, I thought that was kind of attractive and maintained. And as your landscape architect has indicated, you know, native plantings within the retention area. So I, I thought this was a good alternative development and doing a nice job of buffering. Right now, there are what, two or three large trees on Grant Street. Older ones, big ones. We would supplement those with the staff-recommended trees.
Okay, thank you very much. Young lady?
It's more of a question for him. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Bill.
Bill, hi. If you're maintaining the, that area now, I didn't realize that the other owner was out.
Yeah.
We, a lot of us walk their dogs down that area, plus there's a lot of people, you know, you'll see. Can you, I've tripped over, and I've noticed they, those water, those water things.
The manhole or the?
No, the fire hydrant things. They, they've had pieces of wood, you know, like hammered in front of them.
Oh, miss?
They fall down.
Miss?
Yes. Oh, no, it has nothing to do with it?
That's really not our purview at this.
Okay.
If you would, please. If you would, please come back up there. So the home audience cannot hear you unless you speak into the microphone.
Okay. I just, I, there's a lot of things that could be said, but I just wanted to make something clear. When I spoke with Jill, I looked at the plans last week, I believe it was. I think when she measured it out, the distance from the townhomes to the end of the retention was 180 feet. I know that's what one of the questions was. That's what, to scale, she said was 180 feet from the back of the townhomes to the, where the parking lot starts.
The impression I get, your home is the second one from?
Corner.
The corner.
I'm the only house, really, my, I'm the house closest to, you know, Ogden.
You'd, oh, you'd be across from the retention pond, as I see it.
I would be across, the way I measured it, I'd be half across the retention and the end of my property could be half across the parking lot.
Yeah, I was more or less looking at the house.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Please, if you would, come, come up to the podium.
Just one of the certifications. So is this retention pond being put in because there are concerns because of the last flooding we had? Or because, I mean, right now, there is a retention ditch, right? Right along the, this property line?
Yes, but they, they want to redo the retention.
I see.
So that they can park and part of the existing retention basin and then put the retention up close to you folks. So you will see more greenery and not less, as, far away from the asphalt, as far away from you as possible.
Okay. Well, my concern would be, what does that do when you move a retention pond closer to, to our properties? Because so far, I would have to be honest with you, we did not have flooding even with the last big flood that we had. So this retention pond works. It was just the volume of water that, you know, came down in two, three hours. So we didn't get flooded, you know, even, even at that point.
I will ask our staff, Jill, they're not allowed to decrease the amount of detention, are they?
Correct. The, regardless of the flooding situation, full detention is required for the entire site. And the existing detention out there would not provide for the new improvements. So they're increasing the amount of detention. And our engineer will be checking that as part of the, the permit process to make sure that it meets our requirements.
I would prefer to see a park, but, yeah.
Not to beat a dead horse with this. I mean, taking a look at the picture, I mean, you guys can.
Now, you're the gentleman with the quarter house.
Yes.
You have the southwest.
Correct.
House.
Yes. And not to beat a dead horse or anything.
Can you point your house out on that map?
Uh, my house is right here.
Okay.
If you're taking a look at the property in question, when I brought up those pictures about those pork chops and stuff, no. There ain't enough room. I mean, he put that fence right on the property line. There ain't enough room to get a, a truck down there. Look where the green line is and look where that's at. There ain't enough room to get a truck down there. This, this other plan looks great here. Anyway, it's not going to work.
Now, I have to disagree with you. You can get a semi in there quite easily. I drive a, I drive a large pickup truck, pull a 39-foot motorhome, 10-foot wide, and I'd get that in there very easily.
My motorhome's very good.
One of the things to point out, too, is that we don't have a petition before us for the end user at this point. When an end user is identified, if it is an auto use, it would require a special use permit. And as part of that special use permit, this, this group will be reviewing the petition and can add. and can add special conditions, reasonable special conditions to any special use of people. In some cases, we've had unloading and loading of vehicles take place up by Ty Warner in the M Manufacturing District to kind of offset some of the types of concerns that you mentioned. That's always an option.
Yeah. And...
And in a, in a way, we're digressing, though, from...
Yeah.
What is before this board right now, because we don't even know what this gentleman is going to be able to sell this to. Right now, he's looking for a consolidation of property, which really is the only item that's before.
And that's the scarier thing, because right now, this is all a dream, dream plan right now. I mean, he already stated that he tried selling it to people, but is, is it one of those things, he's not going to make much on the residential, will make more on the commercial sale. And then he already said he's going to sell it, so he's going to woo us and wow us with this plan. But he's going to sell it and give it to somebody else, and somebody else is going to have all those other problems we've had. You know, they don't have to hold up to what he's saying, right?
No, but I guarantee you one thing. If those seven townhomes were built along Grant Street, you would have far more traffic on there than what you do now. From what I can understand on this whole problem, the automobile dealers that are using Grant Street right now are IOZO, and he's exiting and entering through that north end of his property where the vacant lot is.
Well, not so much, but...
Anything we can do to close that off?
Can we put a fence there so they can't get out of their property?
Because we should have a parkway up there, correct?
That's not the big concern right now. I, I mean, that, there's a, there's a fence across the back of there, but I'm just saying...
I'm not talking about the back, I'm talking about the front that would face that vacant lot.
He can't get through the vacant lot. They don't use it anymore. They used to use it. The biggest thing is, is when this becomes a drive-in here.
That never will.
Always is never, and never is always.
Not as far as I'm sitting here. Let's close the public comment, no further comments. Let me keep track of where I am. I believe it is Commissioner, Staff.
With regard to the access to Grant, Staff confirmed in early discussions that a curb cut onto Grant would not be proposed, and if one was desired in the future, that the same site plan review process would be required, so that the Commission could determine if that was appropriate or not. Commissioner Pill also asked me to review some of the history of the property when the lots originally became part of the, the village. The residential lots on Grant Street were zoned single-family in the county. They were annexed into the village and rezoned in 2004 from R1 to R4, which allowed for the townhomes to be built. The Ogden lot was rezoned to B2, so the Lincoln dealership could be built. And at that same time, North Grant was converted into the cul-de-sac.
Just to remind the board, which I have to remind myself here, what we are looking tonight is, plain and simple, a map amendment request to rezone the Grant Street properties. Agree, recommend a plat of subdivision, and then recommend a site and landscaping plan approval. We do not know what will become of this property, but the only thing we are being asked to do is zone it from R4 to B2. Nothing to do with an automobile dealership, it's, that's a very good possibility in the background, but that's, that's strictly, would have to come before us again, and to be judged on its own merit. So those are the items that we will be discussing tonight. And we will start with Commissioner Fleet.
Okay, the, under rezoning, we're just looking, the list of, it's partially a, a staff question. In the letter we got, we have a list of administrative requirements checklist. How much of this has to be completed before, before the map amendment is done?
These are preliminary engineering comments. They're provided so that if approved, the applicant has a sense of what will be expected for the full engineering submittal. So generally speaking, all of the ordinances are drafted subject to final engineering approval.
So then, if we accept the amam, amendment, then the people coming before us then are required to, to do this in order to actually get the map amendment?
Yes, their permit submittal would need to be responsive to those comments and the preliminary review. And then, you know, sometimes the engineering review can take a couple of cycles, so no permit would be issued until all of those conditions were met.
Are there any other questions here?
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I did have one question regarding the, your, as far as the, are you wanting to do any, besides rezoning, are you wanting to consolidate any of these lots at this point in time? I know that you want to consolidate the northern part together, but that with the front property on Ogden?
Correct.
You're looking at doing all the consolidation into one parcel?
Correct.
To sell it as one, okay. I wanted to just get that out there, because the home audience doesn't see that. Okay. I do have one question, because it kind of comes to mind, if you look at the over, put that other picture up there, the current, yeah. If you look at that, and the way the properties are zoned on the west side of the street, that property, the front property, the street was abandoned and was taken over, and that's where the dealership is. Would you consider taking that street and moving turnaround further to the north and taking that parcel? That's always got to be looked at. In other words, that's more of a property up against property instead of a property up against part of a street, you know, and then a property that goes around that cul-de-sac. Is that something you looked at or even considered?
Yes, Commissioner, it is something that, you know, one of the things that, we, we really looked at a bunch of different ways of, of developing this property. You know, part of our concern with, you know, relocating that particular cul-de-sac is, you know, obviously, the, the street would have to be vacated, and typically, that would also entail having some cooperation with an adjacent property owner. And based on the history of this property, and we, that was a road we didn't think was necessarily going to be very fruitful. So it's, it, and we just felt that, you know, it, it would be the least disruptive, what we were proposing, the least disruptive for the, you know, for the area.
Okay. I do like the idea of the, the retention pond on the north side of the property, because it does give a buffer zone to the people in the townhomes, to this parcel, when it becomes developed, if it becomes developed. Also, the, the one house that is there, one of the residents, that actually would be looking at primarily the, the, in fact, I, I measured it out with a scale on, on the drawing, and actually, that, that retention area, he wouldn't be looking at half of that retention area, he'd be looking at the entire retention area. In fact, the retention area is larger than his property line. So in fact, he would not be looking at parking lot unless he's looking sideways. So I, I feel that that's acceptable. It's not perfect, you know, nothing is perfect, but it's acceptable with that type of a plan. So I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Well, my gut reaction when I started with this was, wow, we're protruding into, into residential, and this has been a, I've been on this commission for a lot of years, and Ogden Avenue, that's one of the problems we've had with the, the new market. We're on, on Ogden Avenue with the car dealerships, and, and it's always been a very touchy issue when you start spilling your commercial into the residential. And so my first feeling was, well, it's not going to work. And I went and looked at it, and I, it softened my feeling a little bit about it, but I still am on the fence, because I don't like the idea of, of protruding our business into the business district, into, into residential, if it's, you know, not necessary. That's my feeling.
Commissioner Anton?
Because of previous abuses, I don't, I was kind of coming on into this thing kind of against it, too, but what I, what's selling me on this is that north retention and keeping the residents from having to see the parking lot there, and then having no curb cut on Grant. If you keep no curb cut on, I would be on board with, for this. If you're coming for a curb cut, I will be against it.
Commissioner Pill?
I was here also eight years ago, when we had the previous hearings on this, and I have a few points. I think this is a tremendous incursion into a residential area. And while I agree that the retention area to the north adequately screens the three townhomes and does a fair job for the two homes across the street, what we've not discussed are the eight to 10 properties that are on the east side, that will be separated by literally a fence and a bush. Now, while we can't take a look at what's going to be on this property, if you're putting a parking lot, I think we can at least say that it's going to be used for parking. And we've run into this numerous times at this commission, most recently with the Acura dealer installing an indoor cleaning, where detailing, where we heard from residents who are right behind Toyota and Acura, and put up with car alarms, trucks, and things like that at all hours of the days and nights. So if this reason for expansion is so that they can market this to utilize a relatively good-order building that is designed, built, and equipped as a car dealer, and they're putting a parking lot in the back, and their drawings show trucks actually parking and using that, then I have to assume that that's what they're going to use the property for and market it. And so we're going to put that less than a stone's throw from people's back doors. Eight to 10 lots, and I think that's critical. You could look at page two of the big packet we got, which has the demolition drawing, and that's the only one that really shows all of these lots on the east fence line. The other ones, they've been magically erased, but they are on that one, and you can get a pretty good idea for it. There is, my business is located in, in a car dealer area, and this has the propensity to have up to three car dealers, because there were three car dealers there up until That's a whole different animal. I mean, we put up with racing, burning tires, using the alarms to find the cars in these big lots and stuff like that, trucks dropping cars off all over the place day and night. And since it's a business area, I don't have a problem with that. But we do have a residential area here, and I can tell you that before this dealership closed down, I was back there many times, because they were in front of this commission many times, and they had that entire street parked with employees, always all over the place, and there was garbage and crap everywhere back there. So it almost seems like we're inviting the same thing, and let's expand it further, and let's bring it closer to people who live there. And many of these people, at least it sounds like we've had some long-term residents here, I could assume that we've had some long-term residents, because I know a couple of them who live on the east side. And I don't think that that's right or fair to go that deep into that. A little expansion, I could see. This is a massive and major expansion and a complete changing of that neighborhood. And I don't feel that that passes muster, and I can't support this. That's all I have.
Commissioner Thomas?
I also agree that it's an invasion into the residential district there. Granted, you live next to a business district, you're going to have to put up with some of this, but this is a large area being made into a parking lot on the off-chance that it will help sell this property. It's, it's, I, I don't, it's, it's too big of an incursion into, into the residential district, is, is my thought. And I hope that the trustees would agree. Thank you.
I myself am wavering. I don't like the incursion into the residential district. Question I have is, we have seen a very large uptake in new residential home construction, both standalone, single-family homes, and also townhome units. I would question whether you've given adequate enough time to develop this as a, it's R4 If we were to recommend this plan, I see some fallacies with it. And let me point out my problems that I have with it. For one, I would be very much in favor of the village vacating the street and having you folks, I hate to see mark IOZO, but I think the property owner on, on the west side would get a say-so on it also. But I would like to see the village vacate Grant Street and move the cul-de-sac to the south end of the retention basin. Therefore, you would be, whatever parking or lot acreage you would pick up on the west side by us vacating, by the village vacating Grant Street, I would like to see that put in on the east side of the parking as a buffer, a landscaping buffer to the existing eight or nine homes that you would be impacting on the east side of your property. By that, I mean the Grants, the, you know, the seven lots on Grant Street that you're looking to resubdivide. So I think your plan, as you're presenting it to us, needs some fine tuning, and I cannot agree to it as it stands, myself. If you would like to put this on hold and come back to us with something and do some more investigations for our concerns, we can certainly entertain that motion. What that would do would save you refiling fees.
Right, and...
That is entirely up to you.
And Chairman, you know, we're, you know, we're definitely willing to work with, with the village. You know, one, one of the things that we did preliminarily is really, you know, come in and discuss, you know, various options.
I think you've heard a lot of the concerns of the, of the members of the commission here. And like I say, I think we might have given you some ideas that you can work with and explore, and come back to us again. If you've got the wherewithal to, you know, like I say, we can put this off for right now.
Sure. That, yeah, that's fine if you want to continue the, the public hearing and, you know, give us and staff some time to work on some issues, we'd be happy to.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to table this item until it comes back before us again. I don't know if that'll be a month, two months, or what. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. May we have a question on the motion?
Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren? Vote yes and...
Yes. All right, sir, you've seen our concerns, and like I say, I think a little bit more homework, and we can come up with a much better plan.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. We'll, you know, we'll, we'll get to work and work with staff, and hopefully, we'll be back with something that, you know, satisfies and the concerns that you guys have.
I look forward to see you soon.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item, planning a zoning, item 13035. Greg Pill of Williamsburg Real Estate regarding the property at 415 Plaza Drive for the following. A map amendment request to rezone the property at 415 Plaza Drive from M Manufacturing District to B2 General Business District. Mr. Pill, would you care to tell the board why you want to deface our existing zoning match, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. Again, I've put a map up of the property area in question, and I'm a partner in the Oakbrook Racket and Fitness Club located at 650 Westmont Drive, as well as several related companies. Williamsburg Real Estate, an LLC registered to the state of Illinois, owns the 650 Westmont Drive property as well as 415 Plaza. Those properties are adjoined at one point and are contiguous. The 650 Westmont Drive property has been in existence for 41 years. It was an original build from the farm that was their Health, Fitness, and Racket Club, and it is currently zoned B2. The Plaza Drive corridor was originally M Manufacturing area, although there have been some changes over the years in that. I'm here tonight before you seeking a map amendment to rezone the 415 Plaza Drive property to match our property at 650 Westmont Drive. Basically, what we're looking to do, we own two sets of property, they join each other and are connected by a common parking lot, and they have two different zoning classifications. There's precedence for this in that if you take a look at this map, you can see that 651 Westmont Drive, which is the old wine cellar, is now BMW, and it's been zoned B2, and the Acura dealer goes all the way through on the other side, that was originally 405 Plaza, and that goes through now. So we're not looking to do any type of spot zoning, we're looking to unify these properties. In the future, we want to have a matched set of properties that allows us the potential to consolidate the properties and/or to develop our Plaza Drive as an expansion of our current facility at the Health Club now. That's basically it in a nutshell. There is no effect on any residential properties, as there are none near us. There are only other manufacturing as well as B2 businesses around us, and we have a good working relationship with all of those. In your packet, there was a letter from one of our neighbors, and he addressed a noise issue. He's a stamping factory, and he would be the business that's located at 411, I believe, Plaza. It's right between the Acura dealer and our Plaza facility, and we've owned that property now for three years. We've listened to the thump-thump of the stamping, and we really have no issues with that. He's asked for a guarantee that I'll never question his noise, and I'm not going to be able to do that at this time, because I have no idea if he's ever going to change his noise. He does open up all of his doors, and there's quite a few of them in the summer. That's also our slowest time. Most people exercise outdoors in the summer. Our business is off about 50% during that time. So we don't really have any issues with anything that he does as far as stamping, not looking to change his property at all. And I had this conversation with him, that's Dave over there at the stamping factory. So I have no problem with what he does. We've coexisted without any complaints for over three years, and I have no intention of looking to seek or to have him change any of his zoning.
All right. Seeing nobody in the audience, we'll close the public comment.
Wow.
Staff, would you care to comment?
As Mr. Pill noted, we did talk to the neighbor at Sherway Dye Designs, David Winkleman. He asked for us to read his letter into the record, so I'll do that now. Our company has occupied the building directly west of 415 Plaza Drive since 1973. We are a manufacturing concern. Our products include stamped metal parts. During the milder seasons, our doors are open, and there is considerable noise that comes from our machinery. We do not object to the zoning change at 415 Plaza. However, we would like for the owner to go on record that they are aware of the noise generated from our activities at 407 Plaza, and that they do not expect our activities to disrupt their plans. Furthermore, if the noise does become disruptive, that the owners or the occupants of the building agree not to take any action against our company. Sincerely, David Winkleman, President of Sherway Dye Designs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you will.
That was a heck of a guarantee they're looking for.
And like I said, I acknowledge their current level, current level of noise, no problem with that. We worked around that, and, you know, they're basically from relatively early in the morning, I think they start around seven, but they're done like by four o'clock or something like that. We're much longer, our business is seven days a week, 18, 19 hours a day, we're open, so we're there a lot longer, and it's never really been a problem. I'm not going to do any guaranteeing on future, I mean, I have no idea what they could do, but in talking to staff, I was made aware that there are certain decibel levels and things like that that they have to adhere to too. So if it ever got to some point like that, then certainly we would just bring the village involved in it, and I would not be doing anything directly with them. But for the last three years and approximately five, six months, we've had no issues or any problems with their current workload.
I understand why you would want all your properties and buildings to be zoned similarly, so I have no problem with this, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Anton?
I have considerable problems, but just not with this. No, I have notes down here, stormwater problems, signage, place for snow removal. I don't understand any of it. I don't have a problem with it, buddy.
Commissioner Van Buren.
You don't have any immediate plans for what you're going to do with this?
We don't. Currently, the building was owned by the Bricklayers Union, and so it has a fairly nice interior, and we're using some of the conference rooms have become our conference rooms, it freed up space in our current building. It has a beautiful garage and a three-bedroom work stall, a work area, like a work area, I guess you would call it, three-room work area, and we're using that, so that took our maintenance out of our main area, which freed up more space. And then we've used it for basic storage. It has a great records vault, a fireproof records vault, that's probably 10 foot by 20 feet, so it's a large walk-in style. That freed up another room of storage of records and things that we're able to put over there. There's nothing valuable in it, but it's got, you know, all the paper records that you have to keep for many, many years, credit card transactions, things of that nature. And then we do some specialty one-on-one or two-on-one personal training over there that the small rooms that they had, some of the smaller conference rooms fit that perfectly. So our current plan right now is to do nothing. We don't have anything set up to go with it. This is sort of step one, and eventually, we're going to want to do something, and I thought this would be a good time to get this out of the way.
Okay, but if that eventual, like the parking lot being a car dealership before us, you kind of have to look beyond what you're doing right now. Is that, you see it as being related to your current function?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Otherwise, why would you change the zone?
That's exactly, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought that was clear from my letter. I'm sorry, yes, absolutely. It would be an extension of our current business.
That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
My question is, as far as the percentage of building that you're going to occupy as operations, you know, your repairs and your business operations, and future athletic operations, how much is going to be towards the regular business, the athletic part? You know, is it going to be 60% of the building, 50%, 20%?
I'm not sure I could answer the question accurately at this point, because I don't know exactly what we'll do with it in the future. But I guess the question I would ask you is, you know, in our previous, in our big building, we had a maintenance area. So we've moved that over there, and then we've been able to reuse the maintenance area for other things. But that's really inherent in any business. You have to have bathrooms, maintenance areas, employee areas, you know, things of that nature. So the whole building would be used. Now, if you're asking how much of it is going to be used for exercising, I mean, not even all my building's used for exercising now. There's a bar in it, there's a children's area, there's locker rooms, those aren't exercise areas. So I don't know if I could-
Those are ancillary. What I'm saying is, as far as the-
The entire building would be used, and it's being used right now.
Yeah, I mean, approximately how much of it is being used for your current, what you've moved out of the old building? How much are you occupying right now?
Oh, I would say we're probably using about 40%.
So there's a good 60% of that building can be used or reused or utilized for the regular athletic-type operations and exercises.
Yeah, we've had all kinds of designs from, you know, we've had all kinds of suggestions from spin rooms for spinning classes and things, all kinds of stuff like that. We've got probably a list of 20 or 30 different-
So a major portion, where I was going, leading to is, a major portion of that building will be used for additional, expansion of your existing business.
And the 40% that we've brought over, while not exactly the core business, it's allowed us to use that space in the core business to expand the core business.
Sure. I think it's a great idea to consolidate the businesses. Now, do you ever see in the future possibly acquiring the other property, not the stamping facility, but the other one, and possibly moving out that way?
You know, that's always an option. It's interesting dynamics over in that area, so everybody's talking to everybody, that's basically how it is. So this one came up, and it was, we quickly moved on it, and we certainly would entertain, we did on the previous, on the Baker Square, we just didn't come in first place on that one. So, you know, when they come, and if they come, so I guess we're 1-1 on sales of the properties surrounding us.
I think it's a good use of the property, and it could have been used for, once again, for manufacturing, but since you've got it and you've got an adjacent property, I think it's okay. It's not really spot-
In our business, our original business was the first one, I don't have formal evidence of this, but the stories that are told by the person, the gentleman we bought the business from was the builder of the business, and he said that the street was actually cut, Westmont Drive was cut, it was Woodstock at that time, was actually cut for that particular business. They were the, we were the first ones in there. So we're in our 41st year of operation. Now, several of the others, once the street went in, then those other businesses came pretty quick, so several of them were built the following year, including the three on the backside. But we're an original tenant, an original property owner from back there then.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Fleet?
One of the questions we always like to ask our B2 people, is any increase in retail sales, square footage?
Horrible.
I would say probably not, just the opposite. When we first took over the business, some 14 years ago, there was a relatively large, large by comparative standards, pro shop inside. Like a lot of brick and mortar businesses, we've been hit, we actually find pricing on some of the things that we sell to be cheaper on the internet than our wholesale cost. And it's amazing to see that. And so, you know, many of the manufacturers, by doing that, have sort of hastened our demise as far as that part of the business is concerned. So we've had three reductions in our actual pro shop size. Now, the sales haven't gone down that far, because we're just a little more compact and as far as utilization of the space, but I don't see an increase. In fact, I think it's probably plateaued now at the bottom level, but we face the thing that, or the competitive nature that you can go to the internet and you could find exercise clothes and tennis rackets. Probably the last niche that we have is that we have a highly specialized line of tennis shoes, and you won't find that anywhere else, and that's been an area that we've actually expanded. But tennis rackets and cans of balls, I mean, they're all over the internet at a fraction. So probably not.
Do you perceive yourself consolidating the properties?
Well, that would be the next step. If we chose to do some type of development, we would probably do that. And as this step was first, I sort of wanted to get this one in the end of this year's budget year, and that would be something we'd be looking at then in the future. That's one of the two steps, consolidation and/or development, but it would be as an ancillary or an expansion of our existing business.
Well, if everything you're doing right now, Mr. Pill, would, if it were to stay as manufacturing, would that preclude you using it to your fullest advantage?
Probably not, because we've been using it, but it would certainly, as far as doing any kind of development and things like that, in chatting with staff, there are certain things that we would need to be in the B2 to do, and it would be easier to do, we wouldn't need to get special uses and things like that.
Okay.
That's the main reason, because I'd rather avoid that.
You intimated that you also sell, what, exercise clothing or something?
We do clothing, tennis rackets, and tennis shoes, tennis balls.
Little man?
Pardon me?
Little man?
No, because they're branded by themselves. Our biggest one is, we're with Nike is our biggest.
Nike?
And Adidas would be our second biggest. And in the rackets, it would be Wilson, Prince, Head &amp; Babylon, we saw all four of those. And then there's some specialty items, like holiday scarves and jewelry, most of it tennis-related, like tennis ball earrings and tennis ball bracelets and things like that.
Do you envision in the future ever joining the structures together?
I don't think so, and the reason would be, it would be a DuPage County detention nightmare, first of all. Secondly, to join the two facilities, we would have to acquire additional property, because it would cut off access and a good chunk of our parking lots. Now, I'm assuming you meant physical, or do you mean electronically, by telephone line and internet?
Physically.
Physically would probably not ever happen, because of the fact that it would take away too much of our parking. And that was one of the main reasons we acquired the property, because we picked up a lot of additional parking, and we exceed our parking along with all of our neighbors in the area, and that fills up the streets, and so there's, there could be times of the day where there's quite a parking jam in that area. Most of the neighbors, we all have been there for quite a while, so we all get along pretty well with that, though.
Okay, very good. All right, that's all I have. Since we only have amendment requests, under planning a zoning, item 13035, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A, map amendment request to rezone the property at 415 Plaza Drive from M Manufacturing District to B2 General Business District.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. A question on the motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Upstate.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner, did I say Commissioner Fidesco?
You didn't.
Okay, Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, Mr. Pill, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you go before the committee or the hold.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the commission for staying late tonight, also.
Staff, any pertinent information?
No, no other comments.
No other comments? Any board members, any comments?
Merry Christmas.
I would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Woo-hoo!
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded by, motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.